I'd like to welcome everyone to the Marquette City Commission meeting, the regular meeting of Monday, December 16th, 2013. Would everyone please join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Your Honor. Commissioner Kambenzi.
Here.
Commissioner Campana.
Here.
Commissioner Coyne.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Mayor Protam Stonehouse.
Here.
And Mayor Neme.
Here.
Thank you, Clerk. Commissioners, are there any changes desired to the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda? Commissioner Kambenzi?
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll support that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. It's moved by Commissioner Kambenzi, seconded by Commissioner Ryan to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion or no discussion? All in favor say yes.
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 Any opposed say no. The ayes have, or the yeses have it unanimously. The next item is announcements. I don't have a lot of announcements, but I do have a litany of board and commission openings that I will, I will read. Aging Services Advisory Committee, we have one opening. Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, we have three openings. Harbor Advisory Committee, we have one opening. Local Officers Compensation Commission, we have two openings. Also, the Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority has two openings. The Housing Commission has one opening. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board has two openings, as does the Planning Commission, has two openings. Police Fire Pension Board has one opening. We need one alternate member for the Regional Recreation Authority Business Plan Ad-Hoc Committee. And the Sister City Advisory Committee has five openings, and the Traffic and Parking Advisory Committee has three openings. I would encourage my fellow commissioners, if you know of someone who's interested, or someone in the audience, or someone who may be watching us on TV. We are always in need of volunteers. We've got a lot of boards and committees, and we have a lot of people serving, but as you can see, we have about 25, 24 openings, so we do need people to apply for appointment to committees. No more present, our announcements. The next item on the agenda is a presentation. We have Chairman Jake Feather of the Traffic Parking Advisory Committee to make a presentation on the committee. Welcome, Mr. Feather.
Thank you. Delivering our yearly report to let you know what we've done over the year and where we're headed. We currently have four members, and we have three vacancies. Our mission is to advise the Marquette City Commission on matters relating to parking and traffic flows and patterns. We've been around since 1978, and we do one meeting a month. We've had 90 percent attendance rate. So, past items, residents requested that Lake Shore Boulevard, as it turns off by Presque Isle, be renamed Island Beach Road, and we made that change. We also adjusted some parking times at the request of other residents in two locations, one on North Fifth Street and one on West Fair Avenue. We've advised on putting in traffic, traffic calming lanes, reconfiguring some traffic lanes, and putting in crosswalks at various locations, notably on South Front Street, and also at West Washington and Lincoln, at the new development there, and at MGH. We're looking at the traffic study report that we should be getting soon to think about making other recommendations, and also the truck route as well. We're also dealing with crosswalks, in particular at the entrance of Marquette Senior High School there, that's not, not very well marked, that needs a redesign. And also, an insufficient lighting issue at Lake Shore Boulevard and Wright Street. We've proposed to have a light, a solar-powered light put in, and we're just waiting on the funding for that, to make that happen. Future things that we're, we're interested in are adding more bike lanes, taking those overly wide streets, identifying those, and narrowing, narrowing the lanes for traffic calming, and giving a clearly marked space for cyclists, and also looking at the recommendations for the Third Street corridor for pedestrians, traffic, and bikes. There was also a recommendation through that Third Street, Third Street plan, to put other bike lanes throughout town, and we're, we're looking at that map and seeing what we can recommend as well to be putting in, to make the community more bike-friendly, which, which we're heading more and more towards. Any comments or questions?
Questions? Mr. Stonehouse?
A question if I can. You said you were waiting for funding to try and get the light. Any idea when that might be coming, or what the forecast for that would be?
We, we recommended it over a year ago, and I don't recall, I wasn't on the, the commission when we, we first recommended it, so I don't know the details, but we had a dollar amount to it. Do you, do you recall, Blake?
I believe it was about $5,000 to that bike install, actually just the light, lighting equipment, that doesn't include installation. It's a unique area right now, it doesn't have any power to it along that whole Lake Shore corridor, closest to northern, so it's kind of a unique area in the fact that there's not really the ability for a power light there. So, we're still looking at it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Just a quick question, just familiarizing myself with your committee a little more. A lot of the things you brought up were things, or are things that the Planning Commission works with, or talks about, I guess, do you work closely with them, or?
We, we advise, when there are areas specific to traffic and parking, we advise on those, those specific issues, particularly with, with lane designations.
And the biking aspect of it, I mean, I know that's something that's been a little contentious in the past, as far as putting in bike lanes and charos and that, is that something your committee's taking on, or?
We've been discussing it increasingly in the past year, and think that we'll be probably moving more into it in the future.
Without going into detail, you know, there are what appear to me to be a lot of problem traffic areas in the city. Are we really waiting for this traffic study to address some of them, or are we not aware of them? You know, I, for example, it seems to me on McClellan Avenue from Ridge Street to, to US 41, there are a lot of traffic issues, and I just wonder if that's something that you're looking at, your committee, or?
Yeah, our, our committee actually talks about that very intersection quite often, and we haven't had anything to, to recommend in a way to improve that area at this point, but, but it will continue to be, and we're, we're interested in suggestions.
Yeah, I don't have any suggestions, you know, I mean, it's not my specialty, but it seems like the problem is getting worse, and, and particularly now between Washington Street and 41, you know, as, as traffic begins to back up there, and then some more traffic trying to take turns on Barriga Avenue, and, as I said, goes all the way back up to Ridge Street, which can be a terrible intersection if you're trying to get out of it sometimes, so, okay.
Commissioner Coyne?
I'd like to thank you for your presentation. I think your committee's done a really good job, as your accomplishments, I think, tonight show, and I would hope that this would encourage other people to get involved in it, because you have a lot of problems, a lot of issues, that you really are dealing with, and it would be nice if you had more input. So, I appreciate your, your work, and you've done some really fine things, and you've got a lot of things ahead of you to try to deal with, so thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Just one other question, maybe more as an educational tool for the community. Can I ask staff, as far as bicycles, are they considered a vehicle? I mean, are they considered, when they're on the road, they are a vehicle?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they are considered a motor vehicle. When they're on the roadway, they gotta abide by all the laws that a regular motor vehicle does. And we work, are planning on working with the Bikability Committee, which has just kind of been reorganized and, and started to kind of work more towards trying to find solutions to some of the problems, obviously with Marquette being a very bikeable city, so. Yep.
You mentioned that they have to abide by all the rules, but they also have equal rights that every other vehicle have. Is that correct?
Absolutely, yes.
So, they have, but they're not often treated that way.
Right, it's vice versa. I mean, it can kind of go both ways. Sometimes, you know, obviously if a bike isn't going as fast as a vehicle, like 25 miles per hour or less, sometimes a vehicle has to overtake that bicyclist. But, yeah, as far as intersections, stop signs, and all those other things associated with it, they have to. But, once again, you know, I mean, motorists are sometimes not aware of, of the bicyclists as much as they should be, so.
And not aware that they have an equal right to be there.
Correct.
Thank you.
Just to clarify a point, they have the equal rights, but they do not have the right-of-way necessarily. In other words, they can't just go down the middle of the lane and, and impede traffic. They have to pull to the right side of the road, and the car has the right-of-way. However, what Captain Rebo is referring to is that when you, when they come to a stoplight or a stop sign, or a yield, or a left turn, they still have to abide by the traffic rules when they do that. If that just clarifies, I want to make sure you understood the equal rights aspect of it.
Oh, any other questions?
We have nothing further. Thank you, Mr. Feather.
Thank you.
Appreciate the, your committee.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is boards and committees. We have a single appointment for the Sustainability Community, Sustainable Community Ad-Hoc Committee, Muriel Kangas. Commissioners, what is your pleasure regarding this? Commissioner Ryan?
I move we appoint Muriel Kangas to the Sustainable Community Ad-Hoc Committee for a term ending 9/116.
Is there a second? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Okay. It's moved by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Reynolds, to appoint Muriel Kangas to the Sustainable Community Ad-Hoc Committee for a term ending September 1st, 2016. Commissioner Ryan, anything further?
Just that she stepped forward and volunteered to serve in this way, so we appreciate her offer to serve.
Commissioner Reynolds, anything further?
Just welcome aboard.
Any other commissioner, any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor say yes.
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 All opposed say no. The motion is, is passed on a unanimous affirmative vote. The next section of the agenda is public comment. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Citizens may reserve time to speak on agenda items. This may result in the item being moved up on the agenda at the mayor's discretion. Any citizens wishing to address the commission? Please state your naming address, please.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Brad Newman. I live at 339 East Arch Street. I'm the chair of the Marquette Bikability Committee, and so I just wanted to let you know that you have that issue before you on new business, and I'm here at that time if you have any questions, or would like me to present a little more background information on that. So, thank you, I look forward to that.
What was your last name again?
It's Newman.
Newman, okay.
N-E-U-M-A-N-N.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Newman. Any other citizens wishing to address the commission?
Thank you, Jeff Verito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette, these are my opinions. You don't even read short consent agendas anymore. Ryan and Stonehouse claim it's a routine item. It's not routine. Items and amounts always change. You eliminated, eliminated this in three minutes of comment, in part to save time, when time is rarely a factor. Who's so hurried to leave? Tonight, the agenda is near empty, yet we're paying you the full amount to attend. What a poor investment. December 9th, a man protested trucks on Lake Shore Boulevard. Of course, he lives atop the bluff like a certain other citizen who can't agree more. The trucks are obnoxious, not only to us, but more so to those who use the Lake Shore. They pose a hazard to cars that pull in and out along the beach. The noise, the stench, and the sight of them further detract. Please rid our Lake Shore of large trucks, and don't put any stoplights on our shore. December 9th, a citizen questioned the enforceability of your ethics code. Campana said the wording was researched and is as good as can be done. Nobody can know that. Ryan called the wording ambiguous, but that didn't stop the majority of your votes, any more than on your theft of our closing comment. Four of you deserve a recall for stealing this important opportunity, for the reasons that Ryan stated. He, out of you all, the one who's taken the most ridicule, recognized the value of keeping it. His action speaks volumes, not only about him, but about four other members who stole the time from everyone to protect their selfish hides, to shun accountability, to look good on TV, and to carry on to their hearts' content. No one should be allowed to lie into the public record. Were my years of accusations and advice wrong, you'd have delved into the record years ago and ridded yourselves of me, thereby keeping the closing comment. Why not review the record for everyone's sake? What you'll learn is that I praise the beauty of Marquette more than anyone else. You set two milestones on November 25th. You're off to the worst start of any commission in 16 years, and secondly, Campana is off to the worst start of any member. We saw him fall for Coyne's manipulation, not even cognizant of the logic or the seriousness of his decision. He's not an independent thinker, as mandated in your code of ethics. Few people used closing comment, or else we'd see a public uproar, being that you obviously stole the minutes to conceal your sheer, conceal your sheer cowardice in the most gutless act I've ever been part of. Neme, Stonehouse, Campana, and especially Coyne. They exhibit a dire combination of negative human elements, such as negligence, lack of integrity, sneakiness, unaccountability, and arrogance, the latter most exhibited by Neme, who wrote during half of my December 9th comment. I reminded him that all discourse passes through the chair. He replied that he has ears, expecting me to comment in the top of his forehead while he reviewed and wrote unrelated manner, his version of undivided attention. Last week, as if meant to happen, I overheard a TV judge ask a litigant, would you rather be right or be happy? That's good food for thought over the holidays.
Thank you, Mr. Verito. Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
Thank you.
Would you state your name?
My name's Brian Block. I live at 908 North Third Street. Some of you already know me. I am the first speaker of what will be three comments from what I would, I guess, refer to as the advance party for a group of Marquette residents who intend in 2014 to see the city decriminalize possession of marijuana. I'm not talking about legalizing it, I'm talking about making it a ticket. I have a proposed ordinance, a mission statement, and a short brief of social, medical, and legal information that I would like to share with the commission. I would hope that the commission would consider this, get us onto the agenda for formal consideration sometime in early 2014. The information that we have here forms the basis of the website, which we'll have posted next week, and if it is okay, I'm not sure if you let me hand this stuff out. And I thank you for your time.
Dr. Curtis Martyr, I live at 2867 North Crest Drive. I did the research and wrote most of this letter, and I sincerely believe that nobody's asking for legalization, but there's been, there's a progressing social movement in the United States now, that's moving in, in a direction that will soon come to the United States, whether you like it or not. We're not discussing the issue of drug use, we're just simply asking to decriminalize and make this a finable ticket in the city of Marquette, in an effort to protect younger people who unfortunately, whatever the circumstance, get arrested for this, to avoid a misdemeanor citation, which can have tremendous economic and, and impair opportunity for the rest of their lives, and especially during this interval of change. And I think many cities in Michigan have already done this, including Lansing, Jackson, I'm trying to think of the other one. There were three that just, just passed it on the ballot, but I think it would, it would bring a significant cost savings to the city, and would avoid a lot of hurtful activity to people where the punishment is dramatically worse than the, than the crime. I realize that's arguable, but, and I think it would, it would be a good thing for the city, it would be progressive, it would, it would put us in the realm of places, like, whether you agree or not, like Madison and Ann Arbor, where the laws, similar laws have existed for a long period of time. Ferndale is another city in Michigan. And I just think it'd be a good idea to take a look at this, and look at the letter. I've done a lot of research, you know, relevant to the social and medical issues that we're all facing, but change comes, and I think it's a worthy consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Martyr. Anyone else wishing to address the commission? Any other citizens desire to address the city commission? Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting, go on to the next item is the consent agenda. What is, Commissioners, what is your pleasure with consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Commissioner Kambenzi?
I'll support.
Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Stonehouse, carried by, or seconded by Commissioner Kambenzi to approve the consent agenda, and I'll read it real quickly. The approved minutes to December 9th meeting, total bills payable in the amount of $612,779, network segmentation for the wastewater computer system, an upgrade project, and a lease agreement with 906 Technologies for a server, our geographic information system. All in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda, say yes.
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 Any opposed to the motion, say no. The motion is passed on a unanimous affirmative vote. The next item is unfinished business. City Clerk, would you read the background on this, please?
Yes, Your Honor, this is the Marquette Figure Skating Club. Storage space agreement. Background, the Marquette Figure Skating Club has requested the city commission's consideration and leasing storage space at Lakeview Arena. The city attorney has drafted a standard lease agreement, which provides for the terms and conditions of the request. The monthly rent payment shall be $41.67. The term of the lease is three years. The proposed lease agreement was introduced at the commission's December 9th, 2013 meeting. Recommend, our fiscal effect, the Lakeview Arena Fund will receive $504 in revenue for FY 2013-14. Recommendation, approve the lease agreement with the Marquette Figure Skating Club for storage space at Lakeview Arena for the period November 21st, 2013, through November 21st, 2016, at a rate of $41.67 per month, and authorize a mayor and clerk to execute the agreement, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, what is your pleasure regarding this item? Could I have a motion to approve it? Commissioner Ryan?
I move we approve the recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion? Commissioner Campana?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Campana, to approve this lease. Any further discussion? Commissioner Ryan?
Not really. This is something we've been dealing with in the past, and it's important to move it forward.
Commissioner Campana, anything further? Any other Commissioners' comments on, on this item? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say yes.
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 Any opposed, say no. The motion is approved unanimously. The next item on the agenda is an award application for American, League of American Bicyclists. City Clerk, could you read the background, please?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Background, the city of Marquette achieved the League of American Bicyclists Bronze, Bronze Level Bicycle Friendly Community Award in 2010, which is a four-year distinction award. The Marquette Bikability Committee, the MBC, a community action group, is working to renew and potentially upgrade the distinction to silver or gold level. The application for renewal is due February 19th, 2014. On December 3rd, 2013, the MBC made a presentation to the Planning Commission requesting support for the application. The Planning Commission made the following motion. It was moved by Laurie, seconded by Clip, and carried six to zero to endorse the application for renewal of the Bicycle Friendly Community Award, and recommended the city commission to endorse it with the enhancements provided by the city planning department. A full excerpt of the meeting minutes is included as an attachment. Staff supports the recommendation from the Planning Commission. Fiscal effect, none by this action recommendation. Endorse the enhancements provided by the city planning department and the application for renewal of the Bicycle Friendly Community Award. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, what is your pleasure with this item? Could I have a motion to approve this item? Commissioner Coyne?
I move that we endorse the enhancements provided by the city planning department in the application for renewal of the Bicycle Friendly Community Award.
Thank you. Commissioner Reynolds?
I do. Second.
Okay. Commissioner Coyne, do you have anything further to say about this?
No, I think it's a great idea, and I think it'll help move along, making Marquette more safe and more friendly bicycle-wise.
Commissioner Reynolds, do you have anything further?
Nothing further.
Okay. Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Kambenzi?
Just one comment. Last year, we got the, was it the Silver Medal? Or did we apply for this? We got some award where we were, or bronze, okay. And the only other question I have, there's, there's a new buzz about snow biking. Is there any mention of that in, in the application?
Hi, again, Brad Newman. I'm the chairperson of the Market Bikability Committee, and, and yes, we do reference the burgeoning snow bike movement, and, you know, it's, I think, things like that, the, you know, the expanse of the NTN network, which is 60-plus miles of a single track that is within the city limits and in adjacent municipalities, the, the 28 or nearly 30 miles of paved multi-use pathway that runs through the city and out to neighboring municipalities, it's, it's all of that network, yes, that helps to make this, you know, pretty, pretty significant application to the League of American Bicyclists. So, that's, that's definitely part of, you know, what we're looking to document and, and showcase of Marquette. The other part of it is some of what we talked about earlier, that you talked about as, as Mr. Feather was presenting, you know, that on-street network that ties the recreation pathways to businesses, and allows for people to commute, to run daily needs. So, that, that all ties into what we've prepared here and presented. Certainly, we think Marquette has a lot to showcase as it relates to the recreation network that we have here. I think where we do have a little bit further to go is as it relates to that on-street accommodation of cyclists, in more of a complete streets, kind of an approach to mobility and, and traffic. And so, we've made some significant steps there with some of the restriping and traffic calming that's happened recently, and with some of the recent plans, like the Third Street Sustainable Corridor Plan, and the Planning Commission's updated master plan. I, I think there'll be some more movement there as it relates to, again, on-street accommodation of cyclists, and, and more of a complete streets approach.
Well, I'd just like to say thank you for putting the time in to apply for this, because I, I think a lot of people do see it, and it's nice to be recognized, coming from the Midwest, competing with, I guess, the West in a lot of this stuff, so, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Thank you for your support.
Stonehouse?
I just want to comment too, to thank you very much for what you're doing in the Bike Committee and the coordination with the city on this. This is important to us. It raises our visibility and it really is where our future is too. And we just need to get there in an orderly way. But thank you very much for what you're doing and please pass it on to the whole committee.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Ryan?
Yes, I would strongly support this too. And I, there's no question that bicycling has become a big part of the image of Marquette and it's a very positive image and that's, that's a very good thing. And as you pointed out, the trails and the, all the facilities we have for bikers are very important and there's still a way to go. As I said at meeting at probably two or three years ago, I still think education is a big part of this though. And it goes back to Commissioner Coin's point, I think, earlier about the roads and who shares the roads and what rights bikes have. And I, I think there are a lot of questions in people's minds about that. And I, I think the only way we're going to solve that is through education. And education indicating that, that bikes have a right on the road, but they also have to follow the rules of the road. And there are many issues like that, so hopefully, I'm not sure who's going to take that responsibility on, but I think education does become very critical. But again, I think it's a very important thing for the city of Marquette and, you know, it's just paid big dividends for us already, so I'm very supportive.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Any other commissioners have comments?
Mr. Mayor, if I could make one more comment.
Certainly.
The League of American Bicycleists, as, as part of the Bicycle Friendly Community designation, they like to talk about there being five Es associated with a Bicycle Friendly Community. One of those is engineering. Of course, the, the infrastructure has to be there to allow for cyclists and pedestrians for that matter. The second E is education and that's certainly part of what a Bicycle Friendly Community is, is that there's education both for motorists and for cyclists about obeying the traffic code. One of our Bike Committee members is a league-certified instructor, that's Mike Beck, and, and he's here. He's done some education here locally and, and around the country, you know, teaching about cycling safety. And so we'd like to do some of that programming in the summer as the weather begins to warm up. The third E is encouragement, closely tied with education, but it's, you know, putting out events, getting people out there and making more people feel comfortable cycling. You know, there's the young and the fearless that will be out there anytime, but there's the majority of the population that, you know, needs to feel comfortable on the streets in order to just make that next step to get on their bike and, and maybe ride to work instead of jumping in the car. The fourth E is enforcement. That's where the police department comes in. A cyclist, you know, should be cited for not following a, a traffic law, same as a motorist. And I know the city police department does a good job with enforcement and I've heard that they'll even hand out a free ice cream cone citation to a young cyclist if they're wearing their helmet. So that's, that's good. That's part of that. The fifth E is evaluation and that's just continuing to, you know, monitor your progress and, and plan for the future. So all those components make up a Bicycle Friendly Community and we'd like to work towards implementing some of that. If I could for just 30 more seconds, one, one thing I think that Marquette might lack in submitting this application is that we don't have an official designated city committee with this charge. The Traffic and Parking Committee has, I know, been considering some of these things, but I, I would bet if you looked at the city charter, probably references only to traffic and parking, specific to vehicles, to automobiles. But what if, following the city's Complete Streets Resolution, that group was purposefully appointed with representatives of pedestrian interests, cycling interests, people with assistive devices? And that, that committee became one that really is more of a Complete Streets Committee that's not only focused on automobiles, but also has, you know, their ear to the street as it relates to cycling and pedestrian activity. Our committee as a group of, you know, interests in this area certainly plays a role in some of the education and encouragement and things like that, but I do think one of those existing city committees could stand to have some of this Complete Streets focus to the work that they do. And that's much in line with the resolution that the commission passed a couple of years ago. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Newman, and we appreciate the efforts on your committee on our behalf. And actually, it's probably not just the city, it's probably the greater Marquette community that's involved in this endeavor.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You haven't voted on this yet, have you? Pardon?
We haven't, no.
Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, or Commissioner Coin, sorry, and seconded by Commissioner Reynolds to approve the application, endorse the enhancements provided by the city planning department for the application for renewal of the Bike Friendly Community Award. Any further discussion, any commissioners? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion is approved unanimously. Okay, that completes the business portion of our agenda. The last item is comments from the commission. We'll start with Commissioner Kimbensey.
Okay, I don't have much. I'm going to keep it short. I would just like to thank our Public Works Department. This is the time of year when they are out in the wee hours of the morning, making our streets safe. It's also the time when I think some of our community members get the most frustrated with them because their road or, or their main way of work, I guess, isn't plowed soon enough. But I just ask everyone to have a little patience. I'd like to thank our police department for helping with that. And the only other thing I have is to wish everyone a happy holidays and to be safe and we'll see you in the new year.
Thank you, Commissioner Kimbensey. Commissioner Campana?
I would like to thank all the people we have who are working for the biking and skiing in Marquette because that really defines Marquette, makes us a special place. Other communities can't do what we do, so we're glad you people are working at that. And I also would like to wish Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays to everybody. I think that covers it. Thank you.
Brett Hemm, Stonehouse.
Just a couple of quick shout-outs if I can. Great news last week on the grants. Absolutely terrific for, I think, what, $1.7 million, some natural resources trust fund, plus some from the Michigan Council for Arts and Humanities too. So the city has done, I think, a wonderful job submitting those. I certainly thank the staff and that worked so hard to, to make all that work. And, you know, certainly good things to come of that. Also, great news today, I think in the paper, about the Next Michigan Act and the potential for Marquette and Delta Counties to be joined together with that, we're only awaiting the governor's signature. And that certainly has no downside for us and considerable economic upside. So, again, looking forward to the good things that come of that. It is revealing to realize that Marquette and Delta County have been joined at the hip for 150 years. And we've been that way because of the iron ore traffic. During the middle of the Civil War, the Union was so concerned that the Sioux locks could potentially be taken out by Confederate spies and saboteurs, that they built an alternative railroad that went from the mines in Marquette County all the way down to the docks in Escanaba. So if they ever lost the Sioux locks, they'd be able to continue to ship iron ore. And here we are, a century and a half later, and arguably that same railroad is still in business. So we have a very strong relationship with our friends in Delta County. And lastly, Merry Christmas to everybody and let's make it a good and safe holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse. Commissioner Reynolds?
I just would like to thank the Traffic Advisory Committee for their presentation and I look forward to seeing more information with regard to bikeability in the area. Also, I'd just like to wish everybody Happy Holidays and that is all.
Thank you, Commissioner Reynolds. Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, on the matter that Commissioner Stonehouse mentioned, the grants from the DNR especially, I think we also want to add our thanks to Michelle Butler and Clark Lambros and his family. A major part of that grant will be to acquire land, very prime land on Lake Superior for a, a park for the city of Marquette, so we certainly want to thank them for their efforts. On the bicycling, you know, I, as I said before, I think this is, this is pretty exciting. You know, this is not just a matter of recreation, this is a real health style issue in our, in our life today and, you know, it's, it's a very good thing. I think the education piece of it cannot just fall to others. I think the city has to be a part of that. You know, I think we take great pride in promoting ourselves as this bike-friendly community, but I think we have to kind of get, get involved in making sure that the appropriate education is provided. Traffic, I think it was good to hear that report tonight. I do think we have traffic issues. I'll be very interested in, in hearing what our traffic studies show once we get that complete. I think all of us have our own perspective on this, depending on what roads we travel on. And, you know, we, we happen to see certain issues, you know, from, from our perspective, but there are traffic issues in Marquette and hopefully we can find some ways to, to deal with them. Like others, I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday Season, and let's all hope that 2014 is a great year for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Coin?
Thank you. Well, also I'll join everybody in wishing everybody Happy Holidays. I wonder if I could ask the city manager during his comments to elaborate a little more on the Michigan, the new Michigan zone. Frankly, I think it's probably the most exciting and promising economic development that we've had in probably 50 years here. It has real potential and I think it's kind of under the radar right now. I don't think people really understand the, the possibilities that it has. And perhaps you could elaborate on that when you have a chance to speak. Secondly, I'd like to thank the two individuals who spoke on the decriminalization of marijuana. My fear is that it'll just die and nothing will happen. And I would hope that you might have an opportunity to go see and visit with the city manager and find out the various ways that this can proceed, either by ordinance or by vote. And, and then give us a chance to read what you have said. So thank you for coming and it'll be an interesting discussion down the road. Also, in answer to possibly establishing a committee, it's not done by charter. The charter really doesn't establish committees, the city commission does. So that's kind of open. There isn't a charter saying there's got to be a traffic committee and a sister city committee and this committee and that committee. That's all not in there. So it's done by commission, asking for advice from groups of citizens. So I just wanted to clarify that for you. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coin. I too would like to add my holiday felicitations along with my other commissioners. I hope everyone has a, a enjoyable Christmas and a, and a prosperous new year. I think 2014 is going to be a good year for the city. I'd also like to kind of echo my support for the, the bikeability and biking. And I liked the, the suggestion of a city committee undertaking this. It certainly is a big part of Marquette. I, I'm not sure that we have to create a new committee, but perhaps staff could kind of bandy this round, look at it and, and discuss the possibilities, maybe Traffic Advisory Committee or expanding the, the charge of a, a committee and, and maybe, you know, looking at a Complete Streets Committee versus just traffic and parking. And, but I think perhaps the five Es would be, would be a good guide for, for our city on, on how we get involved in this. It seems to me that each of those would, would be a city function of, of one sort or another, not that we take it all on. We appreciate the, the volunteerism, certainly that's the lifeblood of, of any events or any efforts that we have and, and, but certainly we as a city can, can support that. And jointly, we can, we can improve the bikeability of Marquette. So that's all I, I have. City manager, would you, comments please?
Thank you, Your Honor. And again, thank you to the commission for the great support we received this evening. Commissioner Coin, to your, to your request, Next Michigan Zone is a law that was passed during the tenure of Governor Granholm. And it provides for the establishment prior to what hopefully now we'll see the governor sign off on, of economic development zones within the state that really provide all of the tools of economic development to those local, inter-local, regional agreements. And so some of those might be the kind of things that you've typically seen here when, when we're dealing with the DDA or the brownfield, where you're able to consider different type of tax incentives or, or tax breaks, cost abatements, things like that. At the state level, those are far more robust. They have Renaissance zones, trade zones, manufacturing zones, local development zones, a plethora of different kind of tools that depending on the industry that you're interested in, in attracting or the type of infrastructure that needs to be put in place to help existing businesses grow, that it's the full toolbox to try to find the most economical, most cost-effective and equitable way that governments in an area can work together to see that happen. And the idea originally came looking at revitalizing economic corridors, where if you need to provide for some of the issues that we're seeing locally, connections between maybe an industry that harvests raw materials on the north shore of the Upper Peninsula and manufactures things with them on the south shore of the Upper Peninsula, or businesses that are looking to grow but need a different kind of market access than what they currently have. Where you might need rail spurs, or you might need more reliable air service, or seaports, or better relationships with workforce developers or educators, vocational assistants. Maybe you need new types of energy or new types of power where the infrastructure isn't available. And Next Michigan Zones are really the hubs with the tools behind the hubs that can help make investments that companies who might not otherwise have thought locating in an area was very wise or profitable, to really tip the balance and to help make that decision one where you can attract business, grow business, and keep it in your area. And so in the old days before these zones popped up and really before the new economy that we're facing existed, it was kind of a Shelbyville, Springfield kind of a mentality, where if you were in the city of Marquette, if you were in the city of Nagone, Ershping, perhaps you thought you were competing against each other for different kind of business. Where in today's world, Marquette is competing with the world. There are people and, and business interests in Shanghai that whether we know it or not, we're competing with. There are online retailers, online wholesalers, who are looking for our products and the people who are consuming those are, are looking for our products and our competitors' products to see who can give them the best price, not in the Upper Peninsula, not in the state of Michigan, but maybe in the nation, or maybe on, on the planet, anywhere on the planet. And so looking at the economic realities that we're facing, any, any type of tool, any kind of an advantage that we can gain by working together to break open those markets and to take advantage of that, that demand and try to help grow our business and our economy is something we really need to pay attention to. And like I said, prior to this, this legislation passing, there were only four of these areas designated in the state and none of them were in the Upper Peninsula. And so many people felt at the time that creating legislation called Next Michigan, but not including the Upper Peninsula in it, just on the surface, was patently unacceptable. And we're glad that the legislature, legislature agreed and we're hoping that the governor signs the legislation soon. But I agree, this is really unprecedented in, in the history of the Upper Peninsula. It's our hope that as we can prove this model to be successful, that we can reach out and join more of our Upper Peninsula compatriots in it. And hopefully we'll see, I believe it's what Commissioner Stonehouse might have mentioned, all boats get afloat if we can make this one work. So it's very exciting. I'd only offer one other comment before wishing everybody a Happy Holidays and Merry Christmas. Just a reminder, next week we do have some abbreviated office hours. If you're looking to do business in City Hall next week, please check the schedule, plan your time. We'll be out the day of Christmas and the following day, and then we'll be out again on New Year's and I believe it's the following day. So if you're, you're looking for end of year business, please plan your schedule accordingly. And again, Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas. I hope we all have a great new year.
City manager, we also have a Christmas tree drop-off announcement. Do you, could you recall the details of that or?
I'm sorry, Your Honor, I can't recall them off the top of my head. We have a PSA that was, that was put out, so I know it's going to be picked up by the local media, it'll be posted on that.
I recall that. It's, it's not supported by taxes, it's supported by fees, so if you do have a utility bill, water bill, if you pay curt money each month and, and you can drop off the, the tree, it's, it's part of that, that, that fee structure.
Absolutely. All the information and schedules and, and locations are going to be posted on the city website.
Right.
And then they'll be available- and then they'll be available, hopefully, in the press, too.
Okay, thank you. Well, with that, we are adjourned.